Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the public hearing scheduled for 6 o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'm the mayor of Oak Bay. The public hearing tonight is related to proposed bylaw 4620.003. We start this meeting as we do all our meetings by acknowledging that we're holding the meeting on the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish peoples, specifically the Lakewangan-speaking people known today as the Songhies and the Squamalte First Nations, that their historic connections to the lands continue to this day. Before we begin, just be advised that the public hearing is being live webcast, and the recording will be archived on the district's website for future viewing. Personal information, including your image and personal opinions, may be collected and disclosed as part of council proceedings on the video. When presenting to council, if you are acting as a representative of a resident of Oak Bay or speaking of another party, please ensure you are not disclosing any personal information about that person if you don't have consent to do so. Just an overview of protocols for tonight. We have, it is a public hearing, which is a very formal process. Everyone wishing to speak, everyone is, will be given an opportunity to be heard. I'm going to ask that people speaking limit their comments to five minutes each, but if you want to go longer, you will have a chance to come up again. Once everyone's had a chance to speak, you can come back again, ideally if you have new points to present. Please keep comments respectful of council, staff, and other members of the public. All comments are to be directed to the mayor and council. It must be related to the proposed bylaw. The purpose of the public hearing is to give council an opportunity to listen to the views expressed by the public. The public hearing is not the opportunity for the public to learn details about the application. This opportunity occurred through previous meetings and presentations and within the staff reports provided to date. For the information of those present tonight, a public hearing binder that contains all written submissions is available for review if anyone wishes to comment on those submissions. As chair, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation made by any member of the public, council, or staff that doesn't relate to the proposed bylaw is disrespectful towards any other person or is repetitive of views that the individual speaker has already made known to council. And finally, council members are here to listen to the public's opinion with an open mind. No one here has prejudged the outcome of this application. I'm just going to give a quick overview of the order of business, and then we'll get right to it. The order of business for the public hearing follows a formal seven-step process as follows. First, the planning staff will introduce the proposed bylaw. Second, the council will formally receive written submissions provided prior to the public hearing. Next, we'll take late submissions, read aloud, and formally received. Fourth, the applicant, in this case, it's us, will present the proposal if they wish. Fifth, council will ask clarifying questions of the applicant or staff. Six members of the public will be invited to provide comment on the bylaw. And seven, the public hearing is then recessed or closed, as determined by council motion, and will be considered under our agenda at the council meeting following. So with that, we kick off. I would like to start by inviting our planning staff to introduce the proposed bylaws for 4620.003. Ms. Jensen?
Thank you, your worship. As you mentioned, the item on this evening's agenda is bylaw number 4620.003, which is a bylaw to add the Prospect Heritage Conservation Area to the official community plan. The Prospect HCA that is in front of you began with a request from Prospect neighborhood residents in late 2016, which was followed by council creating a working group to consider the process and content for creating the HCA. Through that group, both a comprehensive statement of significance and a set of guidelines were prepared to support its implementation. Following a presentation from the working group in February of 2019, council directed staff to move forward with preparing the necessary bylaw amendments. The resulting bylaw was presented at committee the whole and council in January of this year, where the bylaw was given first and second readings. The heritage conservation area itself is created through the official community plan. The OCP must describe the special features that justify the designation and state the objectives of that designation. Guidelines are also attached to the OCP, which set out how the objectives will be achieved. The guidelines provide guidance for how proposed works would be considered, so for example, architectural details, building materials, site planning, and scale and massing. Four separate sections are provided in the guidelines, which are referenced when considering heritage resources, alterations and additions, new construction, and overall site planning. For the Prospect HCA, a schedule of properties would also be included in the OCP that identifies those properties or features to be protected heritage property. These properties would require a heritage alteration permit for any works to be undertaken that are not exempted by the bylaw. That same is also true for properties that are not on the schedule, where a heritage alteration permit is also required, but the proposed activity would be considered through a separate section of the guidelines. The bylaw under consideration also proposes some minor changes to OCP policy. The OCP currently makes reference to Oak Bay having no heritage conservation areas, so this clause will be updated. Policy HR5 in the OCP speaks to establishing heritage conservation areas, so we've updated that section to refer to the new section nine, which would be for heritage conservation areas. That includes our summary for tonight's bylaw.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. First, we're going to have, or next, we'll have the motion to the written submissions received and distributed prior to the public hearing as agenda item two to be received, moved, and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed, thank you. Now, we have a reading of new submissions. Has a corporate officer received any additional submissions after 3:00 p.m. today?
Your worship, we have, there are three.
Okay, thank you.
We receive.
Oh, we just need to have them read into the record first.
The first is from Ann Glazier-Rothwell and Alex Rothwell. It's, and I'll just read them aloud. "I'm writing in response to your letter dated February 10th to ensure your receipt of the written submission sent below on January 20th for the public hearing to be held tonight. As homeowners of property on Prospect Place, we would request once again that our property be removed from the schedule of properties to be protected heritage properties. We believe that our rights as the owners of this property are being impinged upon us as we have never been formally consulted, nor have we given permission for our property to be added to this list." The next is from Mr. Robert Long, and it reads, "As joint owner of a property within the proposed Prospect HCA, I am delighted to see that the third reading of the OCP bylaw will come before council on Monday. I hope that Oak Bay will adopt the amendment to establish Oak Bay's first HCA. This will be a major step towards protecting and making use of the many heritage properties with which Oak Bay has been endowed. The next step, equally important, will be setting up the procedures and bylaws by which the HCA will be managed. The public should be involved, and transparency will be essential. Management of alteration in new buildings on the unscheduled properties will play a critical role, as it will be on these properties that the future of the HCA will be built." And finally, from Ms. Barb Grant, "I strongly support the formation of Oak Bay's first heritage conservation area, the Prospect, and urge you to complete the process of finalizing its establishment by including it in Oak Bay's official community plan. HCAs are of great benefit to communities. Oak Bay's OCP states conserve Oak Bay's history and heritage. HCAs do this. They preserve the original character of buildings and streets while welcoming growth that supports what's of value to the community. A survey in Oak Bay's OCP shows 84% of respondents encourage maintenance, upgrading, and retrofitting of older and heritage homes, showing that a majority of people in our community will naturally rejoice at the formation of Oak Bay's first heritage conservation area."
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Got a motion to receive?
We've received.
We've been seconded. Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed, thank you. At this time, normally, we have an applicant presentation, but as this is an internal process being, bringing forward the piece, I don't believe there's any additional presentation required. And so at this point, we'll move to council, and I will ask if council has any questions for clarification of staff at this time. Not seeing any. Council Patterson?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'm just, when it comes to amending the official community plan, I'm just wondering if staff is planning to add HCA to the list of acronyms or definitions that are in the document itself? And also, just wondering then, depending on what goes forward, what we would show, if anything, by way of referencing in the document as an amendment if it goes forward? Just wondering what that process would be like?
The question was, will this process include addition of HCA into the glossary?
No, the draft amendment does not have an addition to the glossary for HCA. I believe the second part was, it's the amendment process that incorporates the HCA into the official community plan? I'm not sure if that was your question.
Yeah, just as I was looking back at the official community plan, I realized that on the website, when we do amendments to the official community plan, there's nothing on the website that lists any previous changes to the official community plan. So in thinking about this, I just wonder, how public knows if we do amendments to a document, how do they know that the document has been amended?
Mr. Anderson?
Well, there is a, whenever we publish a bylaw document, it's a consolidated version of that bylaw, and it has a listing of bylaw amendments associated with it.
Thank you. Thanks for the question, Council Patterson. Council Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. A follow-up question. When is the next scheduled bylaw consolidation for the OCP, please?
I don't, Mr. Anderson, or Ms. Jensen?
As council might recall, you recently adopted an amendment to the OCP that was forced to update the regional context statement. We've been holding off on producing the latest comprehensive version of the consolidated version of the bylaw, pending what was happening with the HCA. So if council moves forward tonight with the HCA, then we will be publishing a new consolidated version with both those items in it.
Thank you. Any other clarification questions? I'm not seeing any, so I will move on to the next item, which is what we're all here for, which is public input. So anyone wishing to speak to this item is invited to come forward to the microphone. You can just come forward one at a time as you see fit. If nobody wishes to speak, you don't have to. But your name and comments will be recorded in the minutes of the public hearing and form part of the permanent public record. And we just ask, as you come forward, that you speak your name in the name of the municipality, and if you can, whether you're in favor or opposed to the proposed bylaw before providing your comments. Is there anybody who wishes to come forward to speak to council at this time? I will ask for a second time if anybody wishes to come forward to address council. Yes. Welcome. So if you would just please state your name, rate your name, your municipality of residence, if you're in favor or opposed, if you can be that clear, and then any comments are welcome. Ms. Hopkins, are we providing a timer tonight for the five minutes? Is that part of our... Sure, might as well. Save me the... And by all means, you don't have to use all five minutes.
I wasn't planning to. Would you like me just to go to the end? Okay. Mayor and council, my name is Ken Grant, and I live in the proposed Prospect HCA. Conservation is a beautiful word. We as a society naturally want to conserve what is precious, a green belt, a forest, a national park. Today, council has a rare opportunity to preserve an area of significant historic value to the community. By making the Prospect Oak Bay's first heritage conservation area, it becomes earmarked as a special place of value to Oak Bay, a living, vibrant, historic neighborhood, one to be studied and appreciated for the social and architectural history and the unique rural character. Barb and I moved into the Prospect 24 years ago. We had just finished restoring and designating a house on Central Avenue in South Oak Bay. Like our previous home, our new old house was listed in Stuart Stark's book, Oak Bay's Heritage Buildings, more than just bricks and boards. We were excited to learn that our new place was designed by architect Carl Spurgeon, who we now know designed seven houses in the Prospect neighborhood. After restoring and designating the Spurgeon, we purchased a house in the neighborhood designed by McClure, designated it, and have been enjoying working and lovingly restoring it ever since. Of course, the words lovingly restoring, those are my wife's words. Sometimes, it's not so loving, but anyway. Barb and I always figured we'd try to save and designate as many historic homes as we could over our lifetime, so that they'd be preserved for future generations to enjoy. Why do tourists visit Victoria? To see the charming historic areas, the Inner Harbor, the Empress Hotel, the Parliament Buildings. They visit Craig Derrick Castle, Chinatown, and the picturesque buildings on Lower Johnson. When we visit the U.K., it's always to see the historic sites. The U.K. has over 10,000 heritage conservation areas, beautiful historic streetscapes, ancient forests, rolling hills, seascapes. Just think of the people who will visit the Prospect in the decades to come and be grateful. Oak Bay may be, Oak Bay made the effort to save a slice of its history. Today, please take us one step closer, making Oak Bay's first heritage conservation area a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Would anyone else like to come forward?
Hi, my name is John Tiffany. I also live in the HCA area called Prospect, though I live on York Place. And I'm in favor of the proposal. I don't live in a heritage-designated home. I live in kind of a dumpy house that was built in 1980. But it's, but it's a joy to live in this neighborhood because of all the hysterical, no, historical homes. Historical homes. And I don't want to make light of this. I'm not here to be a comic hour tonight. I think it's actually overdue, but I'm very pleased to see that council is taking it so seriously. And hopefully, we will, when I wake up tomorrow, I'll be waking up in a HCA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tiffany. Welcome.
This is on? Yep. My name is Sharman Minas, and I live on Prospect Place. And you've seen my face before a few times. But tonight, I'm going to give you a different speech, something I haven't talked about before, I believe. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to this mayor and council and the previous one for grappling with the establishment of the Prospect HCA over the past three and a half years. Within that time, there must have been dozens of residents speaking before you and hundreds of letters in support of the HCA. What an incredible process it has, it has been, and what an impact it's made on all of us. This time, I'd like to tell you what the HCA means to me and my family personally. I was born in England. The terraced house that I lived in as a toddler was built in the 1890s. My grandmother and grandfather, they rented it, they didn't buy it, but they lived in it from the 1930s. They raised seven children. My mother and father lived there with me because housing in the 1950s was hard in England. So that's sort of a three-generation house, and then whatever the generations before it. It still stands. When I go back to Avonmouth near Bristol, I can still see it. The other time I lived in England was when I was newlywed, and we rented a flat from a large Victorian house, the main floor of a large Victorian house. That's still there. We can go by and say, oh, look, we lived there. Now, you contrast that with the rest of my life, which has been spent in Canada since 1958. Nearly every dwelling I've ever lived in no longer exists. We could start with an apartment on Barclay Street, then to the Burnaby House where I grew up, then a quasi-communal house at Fourth and Broad when I was a student, and then our previous home before we came here, the only other home we've owned in Powell River that we lived for, for 15 years. All of those, within the space of 40 years, have disappeared. When we moved here 21 years ago, it was sad to think that perhaps one day our house would be gone because, like the previous speaker, I don't live in a heritage home. I live in a 1960s home, although it's old-fashioned style. But here we are today, and by putting our house on the scheduled list of properties, it won't disappear when we no longer own it. I hope that others will come and enjoy living in our house, adapting its interior to suit themselves, and seeing all that the neighborhood has to offer. I hope locals and tourists will continue to walk down our leafy streets and appreciate the same views that Rattenbury and Tiarks did more than 120 years ago. Please, let's finish establishing the Prospect HCA tonight by giving a third reading and adoption of the bylaw 4620.003. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, Ms. Minas. Would anyone else wish to come forward and address council?
Mayor and council, my name is Barb Grant. I live in the proposed HCA. If there is any emotion I'm feeling right now, it would be joy or gratitude. I've never been involved in a grassroots initiative before, and it has been a great adventure. Over the past four years, I've attended many council meetings, been a member of the volunteer-based HCA working group, and gotten to know and respect Oak Bay's staff, counselors, our mayor, and my neighbors. I've experienced community. I've grown to recognize and appreciate how hardworking everybody is in this municipality, volunteers and professionals alike. It takes a lot of loving effort to make a community beautiful, and Oak Bay is undoubtedly lovely. I think the greatest aspect of working towards the goal of establishing an HCA has been bonding with my neighbors. Prior to the HCA, I lived alongside these wonderful people for years and never really knew them. It took the HCA initiative to bring us together in working towards a common goal. Along the way, we became good friends. I've learned that heritage conservation areas give communities a voice in their future. By participating in the process of establishing their neighborhood as an HCA, residents can help direct their community's path. Making these decisions together gives everyone involved a sense of empowerment and confidence. I trust you will move forward to establish Oak Bay's first heritage conservation area, and I hope that other people in historic houses, on other streets, and in other neighborhoods of Oak Bay will follow in our footsteps.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Would anyone else like to come forward to address council at this time? I will ask then for a third time if anybody wishes to, I'm just going to make sure I read the wording. Oh, we have someone coming up. Oh, I will not ask for a third time. We're still on the second time.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, mayor and council. We really appreciate all your efforts and all your consideration over these years where we've been working together.
Oh, sorry, can I just get you to state your name on the record?
Susan Enfield. I live in the Prospect, on Prospect Place, and I am for the creation of the HCA. I just, again, wanted to thank you all and let you know that this has been an amazing process. My parents followed me here in 1995. They bought the house on Prospect, and I always will remember the delight that my father felt when he found such a country lane near a village and the ocean. It was his dream because he wanted to sail, and he wanted to provide a nice home for me when I was getting a divorce, so, and my daughter. So we moved in with my parents, and we have been visited in that house by previous inhabitants. And we have worked to maintain that home, and we feel that, well, I'm speaking for my parents now, who are no longer with me, unfortunately, but it's just been a work of love and community. The neighbors have come together, and it's just, I just wanted to say what a wonderful opportunity it has been, this whole creation of the HCA, to really get to know all my neighbors in a deeper, more meaningful way, and the larger community. And I just would love to see the preservation of our area as much as possible as the link between the Oak Bay Village and Willows and the shore, where people love to go for walks as part of the community. I think it's more than just the people in our street. It's the people who transfer through the area. So just wanted to thank you all and say, yes, it's, we're very close, and I'm hopeful that this will be the first HCA in our wonderful Oak Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Haran, can I just get you to move that chair? Oh, I think, just to...
Did you want this chair, or did you want... All right, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Marion Cumming, and I'm at 151 Sunny Lane, and very much in support of this wonderful, loving community effort to establish the first HCA locally. Decades ago, I was involved in the first HCA in Frederickton, New Brunswick, and it's just marvelous to see how people throughout the world are realizing that the sense of place that ought to be preserved and celebrated is taking hold locally as well. And I'd like to express my gratitude, as you would have opened the meeting with, to be thankful that I'm a guest on Lakewangan Territory. And I'm just so grateful as well that the decision has been made to include Indigenous heritage in what at one time was going to be entirely a settler society heritage district. And I might mention, in a phone conversation today, I learned that blasting had started in the area where the midden was revealed in recent times, in Anandale, between York Place and Prospect. And apparently, the blasting started about 9:00 a.m. this morning. And I may have it wrong, but as I understand it, the blasting should not occur before an archaeologist's report has been officially filed and considered. And I'm just hoping that in light of a portion of the midden having been removed, in my view illegally, that blasting is not occurring that would endanger further, a further area that ought to be protected. And I might add as well that I, I think in speaking with some people in the neighborhood, that there is a willingness to consider erecting one of the monuments. The, we have, there are currently eight monuments to Lakewangan history and culture, as you all know, here in Oak Bay. And it would be quite appropriate, some of us think, to add a ninth, either there by Anandale on the boulevard, celebrating not only a father of Confederation, but also the presence of Indigenous people on that land over thousands of years. And another site, perhaps a favored one, would be Haynes Park, where there had been an Indigenous settlement, again, over a long length of time, that could also reveal the history back to ancient times, that can be celebrated in connection with what is currently visible and celebrated today. So I very much appreciate all the good work and consideration that everyone here has put into this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cumming. Thank you, Ms. Cumming. Thank you, Mr. Haran, for helping out. Mr. Haran is our Director of Engineering, but our acting Chief Administrative Officer right now. So this is the other duties as required portion of the Chief Administrative Officer's role. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Jill Pollard. Over 30 years ago, my husband and I had the opportunity to purchase property within the proposed heritage conservation area. We had been looking to return to Victoria for over two years when our property came up for sale. My husband's family, who owned and meticulously kept the James and James Morris House at 1558 Beach Drive at the time, urged us to consider the area as they felt it was one of the prime locations in Oak Bay. They had owned four previous homes throughout Oak Bay over a 50-year period and recommended the Prospect area as they had enjoyed the ambience of the community and appreciated the historic value this heritage area encompassed. Hence, we thoughtfully and respectfully designed our home to blend with existing properties, careful not to destroy topography, historical structures, or streetscapes. Since that time, we have felt privileged to reside at 1580 Beach Drive while gaining knowledge and appreciating the exceptional historic value the heritage conservation area has to offer to the community of Oak Bay and the city of Victoria. For this reason, we have taken the opportunity to be included in the schedule of properties, preserving our home, rock walls and pillars, supporting the goal of long-term protection and management of this historic area. We sincerely thank all those who have contributed to the formation of this document and look forward to its imminent approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard. Would anyone else like to come forward to address council at this time? I don't see anybody else coming forward. So I'm going to call for, oh, come on up. I do, I do make three calls, so there's still another call to make, so no panic.
Good evening, mayor and council. I too am here to express my full support of the bylaw to establish the HCA. It's a beautiful day.
Let's get you to state your name on the record.
Oh, Michael Prince. And I live in the HCA on Prospect Place. So I am in support of the bylaw under consideration to establish the Prospect, Oak Bay's first heritage conservation area. I've been moved by the touching, insensitive, and very thoughtful remarks of my neighbors. When we were planning about coming to tonight and who should speak and speak about what, we came to the conclusion a week or so ago that you've, you've read all the technical materials, you know the information, you know the architectural history and so forth. And what we thought best tonight was to just tell you some personal stories of what it means to people, and that that's as much about heritage conservation as the buildings and the streetscapes and the landscapes. But so tonight, I think to quote Mr. Rogers, this is a beautiful day for this neighborhood. It's a beautiful day for heritage. And I think you will agree, and you could agree, that this is a beautiful neighborhood. This is something that's very positive. It's not a subtraction, it's not an obstruction, it's not an infringement on people's rights. In fact, it's an investment in, in this area and in the future of heritage in this area. It's, it's an addition to the OCP, of course, but it's also a multiplication of the last three and a half years of community interest and neighborhood connections. You've heard about the neighborhoods getting, neighbors getting to know each other better over the last three years because of this effort. Public support, we've been touched by expressions of support widespread throughout, not only Oak Bay, but across, not only Victoria, but very far from that. And the awareness of heritage values and the character-defining elements of this area. And I guess lastly, I would just say, for those who are concerned about it, it is a balanced approach of guidelines, not hard and fast rules. And I believe honestly that it's an enhancement of protecting both public and private property, both the public realm in this area, whether it's Haynes Park or Rattenbury's beach, and the streets, or private properties. It's going to ensure that any continued development in this area, and it's inevitable, and we know that, and that's what the HCA is meant for, is to manage in a thoughtful, sensitive, balanced way that new developments are respectful of and contextual to the heritage, both Indigenous and other heritage characteristics of this beautiful neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? Please do. And you'll just have to turn the microphone back on when you're ready to speak. There you go.
Thank you, mayor and council. My name's Calum Abbott, and I am a renter in the proposed heritage conservation area. Pardon me. I'll add, I'm still a renter in the proposed heritage conservation area despite some uncertain days last fall. And anyways, I'm in full support of this bylaw, proposed community amendment, plan amendment. And my message is very simple, and it's just that under-regulated landscape alterations within the proposed heritage conservation area, but also more broadly, they threaten both Indigenous and settler heritage of the Prospect neighborhood, and quite, they're therefore a social cancer to the community. And I think our individual and collective prognoses are much more optimistic, given the increased protections afforded to our home under the proposed heritage conservation area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? Welcome.
My name is Jenny Serpa-Frankour, and I live in the prospective heritage area. And I too am a renter in the area. And again, it's nice to still be a renter in the area. I think, you know, as renters, our house went from having seven full suites to having five people in it, back to now having 14 people, five cats, and two dogs, which I think is pretty special. And when we're looking at Oak Bay and we're talking about, you know, having renters and thinking about different ways to increase the types of people that we have in this community, it's really awesome to see such a beautiful home have renters. You don't get that a lot, you know, and seeing that there are other young people in our building and seeing that there are families and, you know, community, both in our home and beyond that, is pretty special because, you know, it doesn't always happen that way. And so it's, it's really cool to see, you know, both renters and homeowners together in support of such a cool initiative. So thanks for that, and let's hope we can push forward with that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward to address council? Welcome.
Thank you. So my name is Maggie Serpa, and I'm new to Victoria. I was here previously to some of the other meetings. I simply want to commend Oak Bay community in the efforts to maintain the heritage of such a special community. I want you to know that it's not just people from Oak Bay that enjoy this community. It is truly unbelievable jewel. It is a site that we enjoy visiting. It's a place that we see such layers of heritage and living that is so unusual. Like, I just want you to know and to understand how profoundly different this community is, in the sense that it is to be cherished, preserved, not just for the people who are here today. And it's not just your responsibility to look at it for today, but I would hope that future generations can look at the architecture, the structures, the history, and have it as a treasure. At a time in history when we are talking about not damaging the environment, not reducing our footprint, surely this is, has to be a priority, that we look at this uniqueness, and we see it for what it is, and we want to preserve it. It's architecture, the, just the sense of community. And I do commend the fact that this process has been unbelievable, to see the respect, but also the willingness of the council to look at these issues. And so I wanted to just speak, not for, for just myself, but perhaps for future voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Serpa. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? This is currently the second call for people to come forward. If anybody else wishes to come forward, please do so. Okay, with that, I will make a third call, just to remind everyone that this is, a public hearing is the final opportunity to provide counsel with comments prior to the potential consideration of this proposed bylaw. If there's any additional, we have a third, third call, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Just need your name and municipality residence for the record, please. Thank you.
Children born after 2015.
So can you just state your name for the record?
Okay, okay.
municipality residence, sorry.
Yeah, I thought if I wrote, that was good. Irene Cocaine, and I'm an Oak Bay resident. Children born after 2015 will experience in their lifetime Planet Earth that is hotter than it has been for three million years. The news today, the top man in tech resources withdrew the application to do the oil sands. And he said, customers want policies that reconcile resource development with climate change. Here today, we also need clear thinking on a bylaw, that's the 4620.003, and the proposed heritage conservation areas. So please vote no to this bylaw until each home has been evaluated for its energy use and has had energy retrofits done and is ready to be beloved in our community. These are magnificent old homes, but they are not for the future. Consider how, it's very hard for you because you're also invested in this and all the people behind me as well. It's a very hard decision, but think of tech. They did the right thing. Okay? That happened today. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cocaine. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? I'm not seeing anyone else. So if there's any additional written conditions to include in the public record, if you could provide that to the corporate officer now prior to the close of the public hearing. And this is the third and final call for input. All right. With that, we are going to close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. I don't believe I need to have a motion to adjourn. Do I just end that? So that concludes the public hearing. Our regularly scheduled council meeting is scheduled to start at 7:00 PM, so we'll be back here at that time. We are legislatively required to not have any further public input to counsel on this item. So if you have it, if you do bump into one of us, please don't discuss this matter until we get back here and counsel deliberates at 7 o'clock. So get up, stretch your legs, and we will start the council meeting at 7 o'clock sharp. Thank you.